The order, July twenty second, twenty twenty four, Laramie Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Evans is absent. Matamore?
Here.
Kaiser White is absent. O'Toole?
Here.
Prusilik?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That's five present, two absent.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda, or do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move where you approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Agenda approved. Um, we have two, two minutes, uh, meetings to approve. Is, is there a motion to approve the June twenty fourth? Um, uh, commission minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Donald, second. All those in favor of approving these minutes, you can't talk, Jake, um, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those, uh, no nays, so that June twenty fourth meeting is approved. The next, uh, meeting on July, the minutes of the July eighth meeting, is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those approved of, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say nay? Uh, minutes, uh, for the July eighth meeting are approved. Okay. On to citizen comments on non-agenda related topics. No action will be taken? Is there anybody out there that wants to come to the podium? Not seeing any. We will move on to Planning Commission and staff reports and comments. Derek?
Uh, Chair Commission, so just a couple things, um, for those of you that were able to come, uh, to the U R A conference last week, uh, I think that that was a good opportunity to just kind of learn about the, about urban renewal authorities, kind of TIF, um, you know, we heard from the state consultants, the assessor's office, so quite a myriad of different people. Um, and I think, you know, Jake, you were there, John, John was there as well, I think. You went there, you were there, Chris, yes, you were sitting like, like two people from the, it's been a long week.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm like, paper.
No, but I think, I think what I would like to, I think what I would say is, I mean, I think, I hope you found it beneficial, um, in terms of just at least learning about the process and what it is, um, you know, I think too, if you took anything away, there's a lot of unknown too, across the state, and I think, you know, part of it's just the antiquated rules and laws that are associated with how state statute sets up the urban renewal authority and what it means. And, uh, but I think though too, if you heard, people are working within that system right now and figuring out ways to use it. And I think that really for like Laramie, that's really what we're trying to do is provide another tool that, uh, gives people some options to potentially develop properties within the community. And so, um, um, we're hoping for a follow-up meeting to potentially do some more discussion about that. So, uh, I think keep poke, keep, you know, keep, we'll keep you posted as best we can if that does come up. Um, you know, I think during the meeting as well, you know, it sounds like the state of Wyoming will probably have some sort of legislation considered related to the urban renewal authority. We'll kind of see where that goes. Um, you know, the draft language currently is, is fairly benign in terms of it's not, uh, not major changes, they're not sweeping changes, but definitely addressing a few of the smaller items that are within, uh, the current statute today. So, um, you know, with that, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really aside, just, I think, wanted to kind of note that happening last week, and I think it was a good thing for everybody, so.
And, and I, I just want to be clear, I mean, we sort of found out that, that like Laramie is, is designated as a blight overall, such that the, um, a much, a much wider net is cast as to what, what properties would qualify as a, uh, administered as, as blight, lighted areas, but that sort of dealing with it by only dealing with city properties at this point in time, is that, is that sort of a way to sort of get, get your foot in the door and get a sense of how these, how these things are administered, um, by dealing with city property rather than, you know, private property?
I mean, we don't have any private property. No one's asked us to do a piece of their own property. Someone, someone could.
Right.
Um, but I think that we have some city property that might be advantageous to potentially use those, that type of funding to, to test the waters. So I think that that's completely correct and probably would be Fourth Street is what we believe.
Yeah, isn't that what you're, you're looking towards with?
Yeah.
With the request for proposal and, and you, you hired a consultant, right?
Yeah, we, we're, we're in negotiations with a consultant right now. Um, what we're doing is we're doing a little bit of due diligence. Uh, we're, you're going to see at your next meeting, request for rezoning for a rob overlay. So, uh, to kind of start that process. And yeah, from there, I think as we get closer to knowing more about what they exactly want to do, and as we continue talking through it, negotiating those things, eventually we'll have some sort of an agreement with them to hopefully develop the first piece of that property. Uh, so, yeah.
Okay, and so you sort of envisioned that aside from the city property, that if a, a developer of a property vacant lot or something with dilapidated buildings or something that, you know, checks off whatever those four things on the list that might be on it, that, that it would be in response to somebody coming to you as opposed to the city saying, ooh, this area, this is a slum, you know, which is the kind of the bad language that's in the, that's in the, the legislation, unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, at this point, I don't think that the city is going to seek out properties to try to impose TIF on, because really, the, if you don't have, if you don't have the property owner ready to participate in that, but really more importantly, just actually want to do something, um, really, you're gonna, you're gonna be sitting on a TIF for a long time, that's probably not going to generate an, a, a tangible amount of money to actually do set improvement that's needed to erase the blight as per the statute. What you want to do and what we think is most advantageous is someone that has a piece of property and they clearly recognize that there is issues on that property, they're using TIF funding as a tool in their broader toolbox to potentially get their project done. And let's be honest, what it is, is it gives them the opportunity to potentially use some of that generated revenue by their investment to maybe do a stormwater improvement, or maybe build a street or something like that, which, you know, long term, we believe is going to be helpful, but also too, if you don't have the property owner on board, like,
Yeah, and it's not a big enough property to make it worthwhile, you know, there's a tipping point of when it's just administrative costs as far exceeding any TIF benefit until it turns into a big project.
You know, some long way in the future, could that happen? I mean, I guess, but I think right now the focus from a staff level is city property and then finding private owners who, if that's what they want to do, teaching them about that option and tools, so that if they want to go down that road, they can.
Right. I think if the city has a successful project on Fourth Street that might encourage some other property owners to look at that, as I mean, as I said, I think, I think that Fourth Street property could be a real winway through the city.
Yeah.
Oh, what are you doing with the railroad car?
The, the railroad car, it's a, it's actually part of the, uh, public, a public art project that they're converting that into kind of like a little railroad museum. And it's actually going to go back on, on a train, like on a car and like be brought around to different communities to teach them about the railroad and the impact on their community. So just a staging area. It'll be gone when they get done working on the inside. No, we don't, we're not in that business. So, uh, second thing, if any, any other things on the U R A?
No.
Anybody? Um, just another item, in two weeks, the Western Planner Conference in Cheyenne will be happening. Um, you know, if you're interested, shoot me an email, I can send you a link to the, to the information. Um, I think that, uh, if, you know, if you're interested, I could, I think I could help with your, uh, cost of registration. Um, since it's in Cheyenne, it's a nice quick drive over there. Um, so if anything too, if you're interested on Friday afternoon of the conference, um, they are going to be doing some specific planning commissioner work. Um, the hope is, is to get other commissioners from around the state together and to, you know, be able to chat, talk about how things are going, but also do some just general training of running meetings, open meetings, laws, you know, how to, how to handle different, you know, scenarios when, you know, we're up here trying to make good decisions. And so, um, reach out to me if you're interested and I'll get you some information and we'll go from there. So.
I did.
You did. And I, didn't I give you something? No way. Let me, let, oh, let me, let me go back and check that. Yes. Okay. Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, um, Tom, you want to say something about, the, the Stormwater Focus Group had its last meeting, um, last week?
Four of the five of us attended, sorry to turn it, four of the five of us attended that and basically they've come up with three different potential scenarios for how they're going to charge people for this, all of, all of which seem equally unfair to some portion of the population or another. Uh, my personal opinion is that the most fair way is to charge a flat rate fee for every, uh, water user and then work for commercial, do something else for commercial. Uh, the main problem I have is I don't think their plan is going to raise enough money to do them a lot of good unless they get the five million dollar seed money from somewhere to start it. Without that five million dollar seed money, they, it would take them years to collect enough money off of the water bill to let them even begin doing major projects. They might be able to do a LaBonte or something like that, but to really get into it, it all depends on that five million dollar seed money.
And, and was the prices that they gave us, which was like between six to eleven dollars additional cost in the service fee and the utility bill that, that assumed that you got the five million seed?
Yeah, that's, that's assuming you got the five million.
You don't get the five million, then that number goes through the roof.
Well, that goes.
Or somewhere.
Yeah, in order to, to do what they want. Yeah, I think if without the five million seed money, uh, the cost per water bill residential would be prohibitive to most people and you have, like we had in downtown, there'd be pitchforks and torches in the city council chamber again.
I think they were trying to present a, a cost that seemed commensurate with what would stand a chance of being accepted in a, in the utility bill relative to, you know, the sewer and water and mosquito.
I think they could probably get, if they keep it under twelve dollars, I think they'll probably be all right. Nobody's, anybody who's ever lived on Reynolds or a street that flooded would not mind paying that. I don't. But, you know, if they start getting up to twenty-five and thirty dollars, then it's, I think they'd have a serious resistance at that level. And again, it depends on how fast they want to do this and what that I couldn't seem to get a handle on, or what they're going to do with the money, are they gonna, what specific projects they want to do first, what their priorities, is it a priority to bring the people on board first, or the, the trucks, you know, this, another, another truck or is LaBonte the, that seems to be the one they want to do first, or one of the first ones they want to do. But, you know, without that plan, they're going to have a hard time selling it. I wish they'd got more into detail on that than to shoot down the three possibilities of how, what credits and all that sort of thing. So, other than that, I don't know where it's going to go. It's up to city council now. I think, I think something's needed, but I don't know if they have a clear idea what they're going to be able to get through city council.
Well, it wasn't that this, uh, six to eleven dollars, it was, you know, pretty much for a, a couple more people, uh, some equipment, you know, some real basic maintenance and, and, um, you know, in, in enhancing the upkeep and, uh, you know, that no, no, no major projects are really the of a very basic level of service, I think, was what they were.
Yeah, so like I said, that's, that's six to eleven is a minimum and it's, doesn't give them anywhere near enough money to do what they need to do.
Donald?
Uh, I don't want to prolong the discussion, but I'm just curious, since all three of you were there at, uh, at these meetings, did you think it was a good process?
Who wants to take that?
I, well, I was there acting as the Albany County engineer and looking at it from an engineering technical perspective. I thought they put largely the cart before the horse in many instances, and I think that my perspective of, of what they're selling is not what the public think they're going to be buying.
In, in their, um, their approach was, was to just throw out as much options and information just to council, I think, and, and, uh, um, and, and they were trying to get from us as a group, just our gut feel for certain, certain options or, or certain possibilities and, um, so it was kind of touchy feely kind of in, in the, in the end, um, as the input from, from the focus group, not that, not that we had technical expertise to guide them, but I, I think they were using it, using our input as, as, uh, you know, something to bolster up their kind of recommendation if, if they, if they push a preferred thing, uh, in front of council. Um, but to be determined exactly what they, the, 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 the one thing that I, I, they, they, they seemed to really want to, didn't quite gear things down to the Laramie scale of things, the Laramie reality as opposed to, you know, bigger, bigger municipalities, bigger solutions with more money and more inertia than Laramie had. So, it'll be interesting to see how that translates to city council, if it's really scaled down to a Laramie, a Laramie reality.
I, I think they were, I, I agree with you, they were definitely not Laramie centric on the whole process. They were just going by what they've done in other municipalities. I think one of the, you know, they just wanted to see what a cross-section of the, uh, of the population would come up with as arguments for opposition, so they could figure out a path to, you know, counter the opposition or uh, come up with arguments to, uh, you know, sway the opposition to it. It's basically another fee on the water bill, it's going to be opposed by everybody, but, you know, they're trying to figure out how to sell it and I think that, uh, we made that plan in the first meeting and then everything else was part of that process to see what, basically run it up the flagpole and see who salutes, is what that, the whole process was about. That's what I thought, but it may be useful because, you know, things need to be done, but they could have done it. I think they should have had more meat in it that was specific to Laramie.
Donald, you? Yeah, I, so I went for these meetings, it took up a lot of time. I was just, for a focus group, the focus group seemed to do an inordinate amount of listening. And, uh, anytime comments were made, the, the, the folks who were running the meeting seemed, uh, sometimes mildly indignant that, uh, other ideas were being floated. So I can't entirely shake the notion that the purpose of the Stormwater Focus Group was to give the imprimatur of having done some consultation and in truth, there's very little consultation for what it's worth, but that's just an Irish viewpoint and the Irish are impossible.
It's a hard lift. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a complicated topic and, and, you know, the, the, the costs far exceed the, the, the ability to, to do what you want to do and, and as Jake says, you don't know really what you're getting for, for the, for the money, because you're actually, it's not like improving the stormwater system is going to prevent problems. You know, a major storm that overwhelms a hundred year design, you know, there's going to be problems. So, um, it, it, it's kind of, kind of hard to wrap your head around defining what actually happens in the way of preventing a, a problem. But, um, anyway. I, I, I think there were, there were, there were things that were talked about that were good to get out there, like the, you know, the French drains and, uh, and, you know, things a developer could do to slow, get, enhance infiltration and slow things down a little bit, but, um, getting it into practice is, is going to be a different thing anyways.
And, and the good thing is if anything goes wrong, the people, Laramie can always blame Tom. It's Tom's fault. So it was good to have you there as.
This was just out saying.
It was good to have you there as roomies.
I got a big.
All right, um, yeah, Derek. Okay, Philip?
Actually too.
Oh, now, okay.
So, um, Chair Commission, uh, we do have an R F P that's going to be released probably in August sometime, associated with the Reconnecting Communities Grant, which is for West Laramie, West Side, um, studying ways for them, for that area of, uh, the city to be connected to Laramie proper, if you will, east of the interstate, east of the river, east of, you know, all these barriers that are there, um, keeping, you know, the, the flow of all kinds of traffic from going back and forth there. Um, that is somewhat a follow-up to the West Side Visioning Study, but also um, part of a previous council initiative for us to go down this road. So we're excited to release that. It's, um, going to be a planning grant, but we really do hope to get some prioritized, um, implementation me- measures and hopefully even some construction drawings out of this, um, that we can put out, uh, to, to bid afterwards with some additional grant money or, um, um, such. So be on the lookout for that.
So, so did you, did you get the grant or you're applying for it?
Yeah, we, we got the grant, three hundred thousand from, um, F H W A, so, um, we're looking forward to that. Secondly, um, I, I may need the deputy city clerk to help me with this one, but we do have the Historic Walking Tour of West Side that is being hosted by the Albany County Preservation Board on, um, August ninth. So if, it's my understanding, if a quorum is going to be present of this body, then we would need to advertise it as a public meeting. So.
A walking public meeting.
Yeah, there, I was just looking at the definition of public meeting, yeah. So it's definitely, uh, it, it would constitute just the meeting of, of four or more of you all would, would require public notice. So we would need to know rather quickly, we got to get the legal, we would need to get the legal ad out like tomorrow. Um, so we could do it.
Yeah.
We could do, but yeah, if, so by the end of the week perhaps, um, if you all could let.
By the end of the week is August.
Friday.
Um, kind of shave my beard and wear a big hat.
I'm gonna, but, no, defer, but, uh, yeah, so those are my only announcements.
Okay, so August ninth, let you know. Oh, no, no, I guess by this, by this Friday.
Let us know by Friday, so we could put a legal ad out.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments by Commission or other what, other, or staff? Okay, we will move on to disclosures, expert take communications and potential conflicts of interest.
Yeah, I will be recusing myself on item six eight I of the C U P for, uh, twenty-four oh three, twenty-second, Willett.
Okay. And I assume for good reason. All right, um, seeing no, no other, um, conflicts out there. Move on to, um, old business. It's, um, uh, conditional use permit dash twenty-four dash oh three, twenty-second, and Willett, University of Wyoming Aquatic Center, and Jake is going to recuse himself on that one. Um, Joe, you want to get us back up to speed on this?
Chair Commission, um, as the chair has already mentioned, this is being brought back before you, um, on July eighth. Um, this was postponed. Um, I do want to say in the applicant's defense here, um, I contacted the wrong people for this applicant to notify them that this was happening on the eighth. Um, and so the applicant was not aware of it occurring on the eighth, so just want that to be clear. That was, that was a me thing.
Good to know.
Um, moving forward though, um, as you all probably recall, um, as far as a background goes, this project is on the southeast corner of, um, Willett and Twenty Second. Um, this project, um, is for a new aquatic center. The previous aquatic center was, um, on Grand Avenue, um, in the Corbett Building. And this is essentially just a new up-to-date, um, building, which will accommodate, uh, not only their, um, competitive swimming program, but also some of the things that were in that facility that were not related to the competitive swimming aspects. Um, it's a forty-five thousand square foot building. It's a single level facility. It will include a pool, diving well, hot tub, variety of other associated uses within the facility. Um, the facility is associated with the U D O P Athletics, which many other things, as you all know, in that area, it are connected with. Currently on the site, it's part of a tailgating and, um, kind of parking area that is used during major sporting events. Um, surrounding this facility is almost all, um, university-related things with one, um, with, with a resident, university residential property over to the east, um, of the facility. Um, other than that, as far as non-university residential properties in the area, the closest one is within a third of a mile. So it's pretty isolated within the core of campus over there. Uh, moving forward during the conditional use process, um, as you all know, there's certain things that we have to look at in order to, um, recommend approval. Um, all of those are within here. Um, I will go over those briefly since we went over them on the eighth. Again, um, first would be ingress and egress. Um, the ingress and egress on the site will be very similar to what is currently on the site. Um, some coming off of Nelson Street and, um, onto Twenty Second, and then the other one on the northeastern portion of the property, um, going on to Willett. Um, these are things that are currently there, they will be improved in association with the, with the, uh, development, um, but also those ones will be separated from the rest of the parking area. Um, according to the designs that we got, um, off-street parking and loading. Um, this area, the site itself has provided thirty-nine parking spaces with four ADA spots, which are in compliance with, um, with the city recommend, our requirements. Um, in addition to that, um, there is quite a bit of, um, probably co-use in the area. The areas that are currently being used as parking will likely still be used for parking, um, in, in case of major events. Um, control over off-site impact, uh, including economic noise, glare, or odor effects. Um, staff did not note anything that would be detrimental to the area. Refuge service in the area, um, as the university always does, the university will provide their own, um, refuge service on-site. Um, and the facilities for that, the screening and everything is in compliance with code. Um, utilities with reference to location availability and, um, compatibility. Um, the site will connect to city water, sewer and storm water. Um, the, some of the details of that will, are being ironed out within the site plan. Uh, and however, our city engineers here, if we have specific questions related to, um, impact either onsite or beyond that, um, the additionally screening buffering, um, with reference to type, dimension and character, skinny, screening room two, excuse me, uh, screening requirements on-site, um, were minimal and in accordance with, um, standard out, the standards outlined in section fifteen fourteen zero five zero H. Standard out, the standards outlined in section fifteen fourteen zero five zero H. Um signs, uh all signs on the property meet um the required standards um for university signage. Um we also look at the proposed use being appropriate um with the specific location. Staff has determined that, yes, it is appropriate in that location, um and uh as it's. In the middle of campus, it's right next to other university athletic facilities and um it's. It's within the uses outlined um within the university's plan as well as ours. The additionally, we looked at proposed use is appropriate to the specific location. Uh relative to public health, safety and convenience, um staff noted no issues with any of those. As described last time, the legal notice was published in the Laramie Boom Running on Ju- June twenty second twenty twenty four. Letters were sent out to property owners within three hundred feet of the property. I will note that the that was exclusively the university itself. Um so the university was the only entity within three hundred feet of this site, um and so the university was the only one to. Be sent a letter. Also, as a just a matter of housekeeping. The conditional use itself, um as far as processes go, are determined by the. The art is approved by this body, um any appeal of that does go to city council, so. Um just so you all know that, we had some discussion about that last time, so. Yeah, um staff does recommend approval of the conditional use um as submitted, uh and. Care for any further questions, we also have the applicant here for questions and also um a city engineer.
Okay, if if um the applicant wants to come up and talk, that would be that'd be great, then we can entertain questions. Thank you.
My name's Matt Nixon, I'm the Director of Planning and Design for the university. Um thank you for the statement, Joseph, I just wanna let you all know that we would not leave you hanging and. Not attend a meeting, we do value your time, so I apologize for that mix up.
No problem, no problem. Um is there is there anything about the project you wanna let us know or we'll just go with questions?
Yeah, just take questions if you have.
Alright, um commissioners, Donald?
So I have an easy one, um. When we have football games, does is the entire parking lot full? I'm just wondering, are we going to run into a problem, this is gonna take up about a quarter of the parking, right? It's gonna take up one whole quarter for the uh the aquatic center and associated parking. Isn't that correct?
That is correct, except for the pieces that, you know, we're adding some parking on to that, what is a quarter of it. So is that any major event, you know, we're not gonna have a football game and a uh you know, swimming meet at the same time. If that's the the question.
I was I was just wondering, how much parking is gonna be lost and is that likely to create? Uh some overspill of parking elsewhere in the vicinity?
It will, the so those sites are used, you know, at at football games, all of that tailgating.
The whole area is used, okay, so will the uh will the parking just basically move east? Is that what's gonna happen?
I don't know that we've sat there and had a conversation of exactly where that's going, but what I will say is almost all of that. Parking and I couldn't quote the number of spaces, but um we currently have a. Maintenance yard that's located on the southeast side of those lots, so. Just to the north of the ribbon chop facility, uh we have a maintenance yard there. And the plan is, so we're just completing a maintenance facility for athletics. That's located over by the indoor tennis facility, and so. The majority of the things that are in that lot will be moved there, and then that whole area will be opened up. So I still, I think there still is a net loss of spaces, but we are trying to mitigate that.
Uh do you have a ballpark figure?
We talk and just, I would just be guessing.
Twenty spaces?
Guess, I I'm gonna guess that it's more than that, let's, you know, let's say fifty. Spaces as a net loss, but again, I'm just throwing out a number that I have not counted.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Tom?
My concern is with utilities, uh first question since the city engineers here, but. We're connecting to city water sewer and storm water and you show that uh. When you drain the filter, well, when you backflush the filters, you're going to uh be filling these. Sanitary sewer up to seventy five percent of capacity. What are the plans for dealing with that, is that gonna be on a timed schedule or fixed schedule, I'm sorry.
On a timed schedule, a fixed schedule or as needed?
So that's something that happens on a schedule that is just like our pools that we have now. It's something that we coordinate with engineering on our current pools. And when that backflush happens, it's a large volume, as you said, to get to the seventy five percent, but we're talking about minutes. So it's not, you know, it's not an extended period of time, and that is, as I understand it, within your. Standards as far as the capacity.
Well, yeah, until we hit some old quake tile pipe downstream somewhere and pop it through the asphalt, but. That's city engineering can deal with that, the other question I have concerning utilities is. Are you gonna bring steam into that facility?
No, the the university has a utilities master plan. Where we are trying to pull back off of the steam system just because of the efficiencies of it. So all of our, you know, the West Campus Satellite Energy Plant, that is a fully natural gas fired plant. Uh and that's the type of system that we're trying to transition to. So this facility is a little bit different and it's standalone, so it is not connected to. Steam or gas, it's the university's, it will be a natural gas system. That powers boilers for that facility.
How large a uh are you gonna have to have a new gas line brought in?
So there's a, there's a gas line in Willet, so just north of the site that we're tying into.
And that'd be enough for you? My my concern, my mo- my main concern is road closures, how long you're gonna. If you have to at all, close Twenty Second Street, you know, that's that's a concern, we had had Fifteenth Street closed for. An inordinate amount of time, you're doing an inordinate amount of work there, but. Still, it's Twenty Second has turned into a major north south street because of the closures on Fifteenth Street. What do you foresee is, you know, anything really important happening to Twenty Second Street?
Um so there's a number of different utilities that have to be addressed on both Twenty Second and Willet. Um fully aware of the Fifteenth Street and how that makes this a a very important street. Um so I'll give you a rundown of all the different impacts, um so that gas line comes in on the northeast. Side of the site, uh that's also where our water line comes in, so tapping into the city water line. Um our IT, we have a pathway that has just been installed for that, uh working with the city on. The licensing agreement there, so that happens or the conduit again, pathway is already in there at Twenty Second and Willet. And then as you come uh south on Twenty Second Street. There's some work that has to happen to some existing uh water piping that. A long time ago served the bungalows that were on those parking lot sites, so there's some work that we need to do there. Um our power will be coming off of, it'd be the on Twenty Second. Just to the southeast of the indoor practice facility, so it crosses right there. Uh also tying into the storm line in that street there and uh sanitary sewer lines.
And fiber optics at two, don't you?
Yeah, the the fiber, that pathway is already installed.
They had the boring machines out there working are already, I think they're pretty much done, aren't they?
Yeah, that's that is done, but we did put in a an extra pathway to accommodate that. Um and so this, you know, the planning of this is not complete, so we don't have the contractors on board. Um so we don't know which ones would be bored and which ones would be trenched across there. Um but I I knew the question, so I asked and. You know, it's something that we always work with city engineering on and the Laramie Fire Department, just, you know. Circulation around campus, just like we have done on Fifteenth Street. Um but what I was told is no one of those pieces should take more than two weeks. And at that same time, like the ones that happen on Twenty Second, we think that they're. Like the the water pieces and the storm pieces that I was talking about, we think that we can keep that open. You know, at least one way so you can get things through there.
Okay, uh. Yeah, that's that's the, will you have Fifteenth Street done before you start construction on this?
Yes, Fifteenth Street is to be complete uh by October. So we'll we'll say by December, just in case we need some.
Well, yeah.
Contingency in there, but yes, Fifteenth Street would be back open before we would be doing this work.
And when 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 does this work slated to start?
So this project, if we get the approvals and get through the building permit process. Would start October of this year. Um and this work, you know, we don't, again, we don't have the contractors on board, but this type of work, this site work. Uh does happen pretty early on in the project, but we would again make sure that Fifteenth Street is open before we started closing Twenty Second.
Alright, the last uh. Well, that's got mo- most of my concerns pretty much addressed, the only other concern I have is uh. Since you're tell, you've got a lot of open space there that pretty much handles a lot of storm water. What are you doing with your storm water on that site, is it going into uh city storm water system?
It is, after it goes through the retention.
Yeah, you have a small one out there, but uh that's a three acres, I think, three acre site.
I think that's close, yeah.
Alright, that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, Sylvie, any questions? Okay, well on, with with respect to uh concerns regarding downstream sanitary loads. Is is that, is that issue worthy of discussion from from um? The um engineering department as to, cuz there was um in the. In UW's write-up on utilities, they they said that uh sanitary sewer flows during the peak hour flows will not overload the existing infrastructure. And does not exceed the fifty percent pipe full capacity threat, so they so they they mentioned something in their in their write-up regarding sewer. But then the staff report has sort of a, something still needs to be worked out, could you?
Okay, so Honorable Chair, members of the commission, we are, so where this project is currently is there's a site plan being reviewed. And at the site plan level is where we have most of the comments into the details about the the capacities of the sewer that we're still working on. So those those concerns that you have noted, we've noted, and we're still working with the design engineer for the site, and we have not approved. Any connections to the system until we are comfortable with those with the that loading. So that is something that we're still working through, and that is more at the site plan level than tied to the CUP.
Gotcha.
We're reviewing right now, and that kinda goes along with the the construction side of things of Twenty Second and Willet. Our staff looks at that every time that we we have a road closure request, we look at the the ancillary impacts, the impacts to the surrounding area. We try not to have where we're kinda pigeonholing people where they can't get through, we've had some times where it seems like. Seems like we're not looking at that, but we still are looking at that, and we would have to review any traffic control plan to make sure that anything was. Approved prior to uh allowing them going there in there and in doing any of this utility work and. Staff has had conversations with the university about not shutting down Twenty Second Street. While Tw- Fifteenth Street's being worked on, making sure that we have uh adequate uh. Flow for the roadways as well for uh emergency services is probably my primary concern.
When when the site plan deals with the sanitary sewer loads, um if something else was proposed. Along this sewer line, um would there be a, I mean, you don't know what what the. What the load would be, but whether this is a significant enough increase in the sewer uh load that that it would really, you know, kind of. Restrict further development. In in into this line.
Honorable Chair, members of the commission, we do look at the the impacts to future development, we look at the impacts to the current development. The one thing that you look at this uh this sewer line. We've been working with the, or we've been communicating this to the university that this this line's been a concern for the the city for quite a while. We're we're working on it currently, we have a current, a uh a project that's currently going on down Sixth Street, that's that is this line. That is the line that they're working on, it's called the C-line for the city of Laramie, and it's a, it's a large outfall that this ends up collecting into. So the city is aware of the impacts, one of the nice things about this area is we are relatively. Filled in with development for the things along this this sewer vein. So anything that's coming into this is still coming now from that the end that we're talking about now, that the impacts. Are to the university, typ- typically, if they wanna continue to tie in, they know that this line has capacity issues and we've been talking about that. So uh definitely something we're we're reviewing, we're we're looking at, but yes, there's. There's been concerns on sanitary sewer flows and both the city and the university are trying to address those through the university doing their. Uh reporting and they're they're looking at how they're gonna tie into it and the city. We've been planning a lot of money into into the sanitary sewer line.
Does does UW participate in sewer line funding on on downstream projects that are impacted by? Development on the on university campus that in in increases the the load that has to get to the wastewater treatment plant?
Honorable Chair, that's probably a better question for somebody a little higher than me on the budgeting side of things and where where that all kinda goes. Uh right now, I know that the city is uh working with other entities to to fund some of those projects and. Uh and then typically a development is responsible for kinda assisting or. Making the repairs for anything, any of the downstream impacts that are that that need to be done.
Yeah, I think the downstream i- impacts, just like downstream impacts of. Of development on the aquifer, you know, that it's all cumulative and it ends up at some downstream location that um. As you guys are on top of your, top of your game and talking with each other, that's kinda what I wanna hear.
Definitely working on it, so.
Donald?
So this is, this is in connection with. Closure of the road, and I understand that roads must be closed in order for an engineering development to take place. When Fifteenth Street was, uh when the the student apartment complex was being discussed. Is the length of time for which Fifteenth Street is likely to remain closed, does that match? What the engineering department understood, in other words, is it closed for a lot longer than you anticipated?
Honorable Chair, through you, uh the amount of work that is being proposed to be done. Is gonna require a a lengthy closure of Fifteenth Street, so no, right now, the the expectations for the closure have not been. Far off from what's what's going on now. You're at the, once you do close that road and you commit to doing these projects, you are at the mercy of a. A contractor and their ability to to get in there and complete their their obligations as well, so. We all work hard to to communicate through these projects, and I know the university is is working with their contractor and pushing them every day. Let's get this thing to a point where we can start flowing some traffic, so.
Thank you, Tom?
Uh are there any downstream problems with the uh storm sewer, you foresee any potential there?
So Honorable Chair, through you, the 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 difference with storm from sanitary is our detention requirements for the site. So the impacts to the storm are are less because we require them to release at a rate that is lower. We over detain essentially onsite, so we we let off less water typically during a storm than. Than they would have prior to the the improvements.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions from commission to the applicant or the city? Okay, I see um comments from the public on this um this conditional use permit. Not seeing any, um is there a motion? Not seeing any, um, is there a motion?
I move to approve a conditional use permit for the establishment of an aquatic center. At Princess Non-Exempt College or University Use slash Community Building, close parenthesis, on property zoned R three. A multifamily uh district located at the southeast corner of twenty second and Willett, based on findings of fact. And conclusions of law and subject to all staff's recommended conditions.
Second.
Second from Matamore, um, any final discussion amongst commission? Seeing none, uh roll call vote, please.
Evans is absent, Matamore?
Aye.
Is there white absent, O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Aye.
Schneider is absent. Moody?
Aye.
That is four yeses, zero no, and three absents.
Okay, uh C O P approved, thank you, Matt, for for coming by and um answering our questions, appreciate it. Good luck. So next item of business is new business, um. T A dash twenty four dash oh one amendments to Laramie Municipal Code regarding narrower pavement widths for existing alleys. And the requirement of water sewer connections at the final plating phase, uh Philip?
Yes, honorable mayor, member, or sorry, honorable chair, mayor and chair, right? Honorable Chair members of.
Got promoted there.
Oh, I don't want that one.
Not even running, right, um. So this text amendment, um, we're actually recommending a postponement of this till the August twelfth Planning Commission meeting. Um, the text amendments being proposed are having us um. Requiring city staff planning as well as public work staff to dive a little bit bit deeper in the code to see how. These changes will affect other parts, because the last thing we want is to change. Um, a piece of code that doesn't correlate with all the other section of the code that may apply, so we are asking for a postponement. Um, the applicant is also here for the next item, but he he's here if he wants to um. A chime in, uh, Mr. Coffee, but we are as staff recommending postponement just so we can take a more. Um, in-depth look at how these proposed text amendments are going to affect the rest of code.
Okay, Mr. Coffee, any anything you want to say that Philip didn't say?
Chair, council, commission, I have. The best thing to do is that.
Get it straight.
Let's go through it and find everything that might might uh need to cover.
Okay, great, thank you, any any questions from uh commission on this?
No.
Yep, okay, um, a mo- uh, a public comment, any uh comment on this postponement? I see no, no one, so is there a motion on the floor?
I move to recommend that the planning commission postpone. Uh, T eight dash twenty four dash oh one amendments to Laramie, Laramie Municipal Code. Until the August twelfth Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from uh O'Toole, um, final discussion, seeing none, um, roll call vote, please. On the postponement.
Evans is absent, Matamore?
Aye.
Is there white absent, O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That's five yeses, zero no, and two absent.
Okay, postponement uh till the next meeting. Um, last item of business is uh final plat dash twenty four dash zero three. Sundance Hill Final Plat Third Filing, Philip?
Yes, honorable Chair, members of the commission, um, this evening we'll be discussing the uh third filing of the Sundance Hill. Um subdivision located on Colorado Avenue, north of Riverside Drive. Uh, this is closely following the second filing that was done earlier this year, or wait, it was approved earlier this year. Um, uh, all of the lots being proposed is thirty four new lots on two acres. Um, are adjacent to the proposed lots from the second filing. So all of these lots, as you can see, um, in the attached final plat are along Colorado, um. I'll just mention a few things about this project, um. You know, a a lot of it is similar to the second filing, the entire area being developed is surrounded by. Uh residential zoning, other than across Colorado, it is the future um home perhaps of a Y O tech campus expansion. And that is zoned commercial, but all um surrounding it otherwise is uh residential. Um. I mentioned the lot layout um all along Colorado, um. No new traffic impact analysis uh was is being required by the city for this project. Um, given this phase, I know there's a the 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 um. Total numbers, number of lots for the preliminary plat is over two hundred, but we haven't reached that threshold yet where. A traffic impact study um would would perhaps be required, but not during this phase. Uh drainage has been studied um and reviewed and approved by the city engineer associated with this final plat. Um, water sewer service as well, it can be uh adequately serviced. Um, parkland dedication, given that this is a residential subdivision, there is a calculation in code that shows. Uh, that the developer will be required to pay um about twenty three um and a half thousand dollars. To um. To put into the fund for uh future parks and um park amenities. Uh, but no open space is is being dedicated um as part of this final plat. Um, so again, it's, I'm not gonna go too far into depth in this because it is following so closely as a previous. Uh, second filing, I will just note that there is considerable deviation with this final plat. And the previous one with what the developer originally posed and got approved with the preliminary plat. Much smaller lots um are being proposed, which is fine, right? I mean, the developer is completely within his ability to do this per code. Um, the amount of lots can be altered by about by ten percent per code. And he's still wi- well within that, but it is part of the staff report that we do strongly encourage um a. Keen eye on this be- for future filings because um this final plat or this preliminary plat actually does. Um, expire in twenty twenty five, I believe. Um, so that needs to be considered as well, but other than that, um, the applicant is here. Um, to to if if there's any questions on housing type or anything like that, I would defer that. To to the um, to the developer himself at this point, um, legal notice was published. Um, in accordance with our uh requirements, uh, we've not not received any public. Input or queries really um on on this. Um, so there's nothing to report there, and our recommendation is to. That this body moved to recommend approval to city council for this third filing. Of the Sundance Hill Final Plat, and I can answer any questions, ask in the applicant as well.
Okay, any questions to, for Philip, Dr. Donald?
Uh, so we don't concern ourselves with parking at this stage, our parking has already been taken care of.
Yeah, parking for a, through through you, Chair, parking for residential is um. Is taken care of at this stage because, you know, one off-street parking space is required for each single, for each dwelling. Essentially, and and these all have driveways that are accessed off the alleyway, so, yes.
Will it be on-street parking?
Um, the i- it. Given that the alleyway is the access, Colorado Avenue is, I believe, well, our senior engineer left, but I can't remember. Can't remember if it's no park on Colorado there. It it's not, however, you, all of the access to these is from the alleyway. So it's my understanding the developer could chime in that there's probably gonna be fences along Colorado, so. Parking on Colorado probably be pretty limited.
Okay. Any other questions, um, so. Did the number of lots increase more than ten percent or did it, it's, the language is kind of. Kind of confusing to me as to whether it was substantially more than ten percent. Increase in lots, what, does it stay within that ten percent criteria?
Yeah, honorable Chair, so at this point in time, given that the preliminary plat is over two, I can't remember the exact number, I think it's around two hundred fifty. Um, s- s- so the number of lots being proposed here is well under that. Given the layout, right, there, because there's only the previous filing, I believe, had twenty four lots. And this filing has thirty four, so we're looking at around fifty so far, that the configuration is what is important. Future filings with with narrow, small lots, which were totally.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's it's great, I'm glad to hear.
The the entire subdivision could could not be um completed with with these narrow lots. At at some point in time, we are gonna reach a threshold where. You know, in order to maintain the number of lots that is in the preliminary plat, we're gonna have to. E- equate the subsequent filings with that number. If that makes sense.
Okay, so you're you're you're, everything's cool. So what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, at this point in time, we just put a cautionary note in there saying that this is. Just so the developer is aware, we have an eye on this and we we don't want to run into a future filing of perhaps the rest of the. It could happen, the next filing could be the entire rest of the property, and if these narrow, the if. The number of lots cannot exceed. Ten percent over what was approved in the preliminary.
Is 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 that something that that could be changed by code, you know, if we're looking for s- smaller lots and and, you know, more more homes?
Well, if the if the preliminary plat, uh, sorry to cut you off, but I I think I know where the question's going, I think, so the. So the, as I mentioned, the preliminary plat does expire, right, twenty twenty five, so. Uh, a new preliminary plat would be required where, you know, it's totally up to the developer on what what they want to propose. If they want to go with these narrow lots, if they're selling well, then they're, I mean, they just have to meet all the. All the criteria that goes into a preliminary plat, the engineering design report, capacity, all that, uh, would and. We're certain it would work for what was approved in the original preliminary plat, but it's up in the air, so. We have to go through the whole review process if it were to be changed substantially. If the preliminary plat were to expire and we were to look at another.
Okay, um. Uh, Mr. Coffee, do you want to make a comment at all?
Honorable Chair Commissioners. So we're fully aware that we're going to bring this preliminary plat back for Arabia. Um, the reason that we're looking at some smaller lots now is uh for a few reasons. Uh, the first being that when the preliminary plat was originally approved, uh, the city had not yet implemented the density increase. And for for i- in this particular zoning, which is R two and R two M, so we're taking advantage of that opportunity. Um, we also, um, the developer, um. Also recognizes that um there is some flexibility. And the lot sizes as we plat going forward, so this, we we believe, or the developer believes that this uh first phase is. Going to be twin homes, uh, when we originally looked at this, uh, at these lots along Colorado. Uh, we originally sized them to be either duplexes, where at that point in time, we would do a lot split. So on the preliminary plat that was anticipated to have a little bit larger plats, or a little bit larger lots with an anticipation of potentially having a lot split. Now we're looking at the market going, this is exactly what we want to do, we want these smaller, narrower lots. So there's thirty four lots total, including the first, the second filing and the third filing, so there will be, I think that's seventeen. Duplex homes that are intended to be built on these lots. So the next phase, the next phase, there there there's likely to be two more phases. And what what I anticipate happening is on and then on the next filing, we won't trigger the ten percent rule. But we know at on the final, on the fourth and final filing, there probably, there's no doubt we will, so before that, we will. Return to the uh city with a an opportunity for uh for for us, for the city to take a look at a revised preliminary plat.
Okay, Donald?
Just, just a quick question, these are manufactured homes, right?
It could be.
It could be, but that that's not locked in yet.
Well. That's not, that's not a discussion for here or there, quite frankly.
I know, I'm just just asking for my own information.
Happy to talk to you about after this.
So is is it gonna be a design build?
It's gonna be, the builder will decide what they're gonna do, it could be stick build, it could be manufacturing.
Okay, but it's not, it's not buy buy a lot and put whatever whatever the person wants there.
Well, that that's certainly an opportunity.
Oh, really, okay, so it's a, it's a mix of of those of.
Potential.
Okay. Any other, any other questions from commission? Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, public, uh, Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to, I I just want to make a quick clarification, so the the preliminary plat, the the shot clock, so to speak. Restarts every time a final plat is filed, the five years, so actually, you know, it it does not expire. It wouldn't expire for another twenty till twenty twenty nine at this point, I just wanted to clear that up, but it sounds like we definitely are going to the direction of. Going through the preliminary plat phase again for this project anyways, but. Just for everybody's, including my own edification there.
All right, thank you. Any uh. Comments from public on this? Seeing none, um, final comments, um, between commissioners? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Uh, move to recommend approval to the city council for F P dash twenty four dash oh three. For Sundance Hill Third Filing Final Plat, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from O'Toole, um, final discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Evans is absent, Matamore?
Aye.
Is there white absent, O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is five yeses, zero no, and two absent.
Okay, um, final plat, third filing approved, thank you very much, um, good luck. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Same, Donald, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, say nay, none, we are adjourned.
One day I'm gonna say.
Yes, okay, just to be on the record as a naysayer.